Okay. Mayor Richard Boss.
I call this meeting in order for June 9, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Richard Boss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Commissioner Dusty Wright is trying to get on. Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
We didn't hear Mr. Baldwin.
Not that you can't see me, but I'm present. Is that better?
Yeah.
Assistant City Manager Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengoche.
Here.
The clerk is present, Mr. Mayor. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We'll move on to the invocation, which will be led by Commissioner McDonald and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Payne. Everyone, please stand.
As we go before the throne of God, we thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all the wonderful and mighty things that we have seen and heard that magnify your holy name. Today, we ask you to look on the unrest in our country, the bereaved families, our government officials, and citizens in this nation and around the world with compassion that heals and strengthens and grants us relief from pain and suffering. Help us to speak with a tone of the learned and help us to discern the times that we are in. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
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 Please bring me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is founded on one nation, with God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that. We'll move on to approval of the agenda, but before I ask for a motion, I have a comment from City Attorney Patricia Bengoche. Patricia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just need to note that there should be a presentation on tonight's agenda that was inadvertently left off. It'll be made by the Superintendent Marie Souter from White Sands National Park. So the agenda will need to be approved as amended, please.
Thank you, Patricia. With that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Commissioner Baldwin?
I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve the agenda as amended. Do I hear a second? Who is the second?
Commissioner Payne.
Okay, Commissioner Payne. I have a second from Commissioner Payne. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay? I'm assuming that, do we have Commissioner Wright on the, do we have him voting? So it's a six?
He's not, yeah, he's not on here yet.
He's gonna make an, he's gonna make an attempt, but he needs to do some changing around of things first.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero.
You gotta love technology.
Pardon me?
Says you gotta love technology.
Yes, you do. You do, I don't. Anyway, we'll move on to a public comment then. Is Marie present?
Um, I see that-
We're gonna do, I'm sorry, we're gonna do that, we'll do that under presentations. Is, we can, are we gonna do presentations now? Is Marie, I see, I see her in the lower right hand. Is she?
Yes. Hi, I am here. Thank you. I apologize.
Well, welcome, Marie. Thank you. Maurice, White Sands National Park Superintendent. We're glad to have you tonight, and we're looking forward to your presentation, Marie.
Thank you, thank you. I want to say how much I appreciate this opportunity to speak before you all. It's been a while since I've, actually several years since I've presented to the Commissioners, but I thought this was a really important time and a really important topic to come and speak to the, our Gateway Community of Alamogordo. So I think on a, you know, on a, on a real not-too-distant pass note, I wanted to say how excited it was to be, to have White Sands National Park become a capital N, capital P. And I want to thank you so much for your support. I think it's a fabulous addition to our local area, to the Tulare Basin, and it's really been exciting. So I do look forward to working with you and the possibilities on what this new designation will bring to our community. So stand by for that. I'm not gonna focus on that this evening. Perhaps another time I can, we can come back and have a conversation about that. But my goal tonight is just to provide you all with some information regarding the National Park Service's pandemic planning and response to the pandemic, and specifically what White Sands is doing and what that means to Alamogordo and our surrounding communities. So as you all know, I did close the park down on March 22 fully. As we noted, so many visitors were coming to the park from out of state as well as out of country, and even after the governor had put a stay-at-home order in place. So I made the decision with support from the National Park Service to go ahead and close the park. We were one of the first parks in the National Park Service to fully shut. So we've continued to, as well as the National Park Service, to follow guidance, the gating criteria from the White House, the CDC Centers for, oh gosh, CDC, the state, the public, and local health authorities, including the National Park Service's public health consultants. Slowly, the National Park Service has been increasing access and services in a phased approach across all of the 419 units across the system. If you contact any one of them, we're all in different stages and phases of reopening. Some have not opened at all, such as White Sands National Park. I would like to emphasize that every park manager has the discretion to make a localized decision that's based on our local conditions, our county, state, and regional conditions in consultation with our public health officials. So White Sands is working underneath this guidance, as well as underneath the state of New Mexico public health orders. And I'm sure you all are aware, the most recent public health order was issued at the end of May, and it expires June 30. So just to let you all know, my number-one priority with regards to the pandemic, and frankly, any, any day of the week, is to protect our employees, as well as to protect our volunteers, our partners, and obviously, our community in this extended situation. And by doing that, we can do our job safely and provide, therefore, a safe, as safe as possible, visit for the public. White Sands is planning a phased reopening. We've been working on our planning for weeks, and we are, I am coordinating with the National Park Service's leadership, following what's going on at the state, as well as our partners and consulting with our concessionaires, and obviously, now with Gateway Community to communicate our health, public health efforts, our best practices, and the ways that the visitors can continue to enjoy our park while recreating responsibly. So our plan is following a phased approach, and we will start off with reopening the park areas, including outdoor spaces, such as the dunes and the landscape, and that's been the typical priority for the National Park Service. The national parks stretch almost in every state, as well as the territories of the Virgin Islands, Guam. I can't even name all of them, but there's national park units all over the country in our territories. Puerto Rico, modifying the park operations will continually be evaluated and will adjust as needed. So our, so as I mentioned, our first phase will be to open the landscape, which will be providing some limited access and limited services. So folks will be able to come in the park, they can collect, they will be able to picnic, play on the dunes, sled, and do some hiking. We're not, we're still evaluating which trails we will have open, and then we will have some limited visitor services at the visitor center complex, including the gift shop, which will provide some sales, as well as our partner, Western National Parks Association. In our further phase, we'll continue to provide that access, as well as operating with, with many visitor services. In other words, open up, hopefully be able to open up some interior spaces as well. So my main goal in this is that we ask the public to partner with us in adopting social distancing practices when they're visiting the park, and by encouraging the visitors to follow the CDC guidance to reduce the spread of COVID-19 and to recreate responsibly. We don't have a date set yet for the initial reopening. Obviously, we're watching and monitoring the condition at the state level and in the communities that are bounding the state. The, and you all are obviously doing the same thing. We also have not acquired all of our engineering controls and barriers, which, as everyone is busy purchasing things, a lot of, a lot of items are backordered and have not. We've had trouble with some deliveries, too. So we're, we only get one shot at the initial reopening, and we want to get it right. There's a few things that I just wanted to let you know, some observations that the National Park Service's units in New Mexico have been observing over the last couple of weeks, and that most of the visitation, anywhere from two-thirds to 70% to national parks in the state of New Mexico are coming from out of state. There are many that are coming from Texas as well as Colorado, and I'm sure that there's others that are coming from all over the country. I did invite two of my chiefs, Aaron Summerlin, Chief Ranger, and also Chief of Interpretation Kelly Carroll, and both can testify to the fact that most of our inquiries at the park are from folks that are out of state. And the reason I'm pressing this point is because when White Sands National Park opens up, obviously, the community will be pretty excited to get out into the park, but so are so many people who are on the move, and they are coming from all over the country. And we've witnessed that at some of the other big parks, which have lately reopened in different parts of this, of our country. So I believe will be pretty heavily visited, especially from the out-of-state folks. I am concerned about you guys. I'm concerned about Alamogordo and our, and our Gateway Communities in the Tulare Basin. And there's a, you know, just a few questions I have, and one of them is, is the, is the city prepared for an influx of out-of-state visitors? I know the hotels are still at 50%. Can the, can they handle 50% or more? Well, they can't handle more, but when we do have visitors coming in, they'll need somewhere to stay. The restaurants are still at some limited capacity. The question that I have, will the restaurants be able to handle hungry visitors that are coming in at 6 o'clock in the evening with their families? And then the last question that I wanted to leave you with, too. Gerald Champion is our, our local hospital, and I wanted to just, and I wanted to just, you know, make sure that they're alerted that we would have an influx of out-of-state visitors at White Sands National Park, and they're going to come into the Alamogordo community. So those are a few thoughts that I wanted to leave you with, and I want to ask you to partner with me as I'm making this decision, and my ultimate, my ultimate goal is to keep us safe, to keep you safe, and to still provide that, that excellent park service visit. So I am available for questions. I'm a, I can take questions right now if, if you have any, and certainly, any later, I'm available.
Mr. Sykes, you have a question?
Yes, Marie, this is Nadia Sykes.
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. I apologize.
Marie, that was a very nice presentation, and I really appreciate the fact that you're planning everything so carefully. I just have a brief question, and I haven't driven out that way lately. So understand that I haven't seen the park in, gosh, a good month and a half, two months. But do you have the new signs yet?
Thank you for asking that. I would encourage you to take a drive-by. We did order in preparation for our public celebration that we had planned for April 16. We ordered in advance the new signs that are on the, you can see them on the highway, and they did arrive, and my staff did install them, and they look fabulous. They just look really great, and it does say "National Park", so I would definitely encourage you, when you're out and about, to take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie, this is Mayor Boss. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Regarding the international travel, what percentage, as far as the attendance or the people that are gonna visit the park, as compared to people from within the United States, do you have an idea of what percentage of the total that will be, the international, coming from other countries?
We, you know, that, I think that's an excellent question. We don't have a projection on that, because that's one, one piece of the puzzle I have not diagnosed, is how much international travel there is at this time. But I'm confident, confident, Mayor Boss, that when the international travel restrictions are lifted, that we will absolutely have international travel. I can, you know, I could, if Kelly were able to speak, I think he's already left the meeting. There, we have a high visitation from, from around the world. White Sands National Park is a world-class destination, which I'm really proud of that, and you all should be really proud of that, too. And that said, and that said, folks will come from out of country when they can. And, and I, looking at our Facebook posts, I see lots of international folks posting, you know, these posts, they speak to each other in a variety of languages, absolutely.
And I think-
But immediately, I don't know.
Because of the park designation, that's, that's gonna increase even, even more, until it's gonna be hard to put a number on that, I bet.
Yeah, and that, I think that's a real, I can speak a little bit to that, because not including the government shutdown last January, February, we were on, we were on target to break all-time records of visitation at the, at the park, and the monuments' peak visitation was actually back in the 90s. And so we were definitely on track to bust those right out of the waters. So I have a feeling that once people feel comfortable in traveling again, and the, you know, the COVID-19 levels are flattened out, I'm pretty confident we're just gonna be super busy, which is, I think it's really exciting, and I think it's super exciting for Alamogordo, too.
Any other questions, any of the Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Baldwin?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Mary. That was great. I've got to hear you speak about the park before, and you always do such a great job. So thank you for all that you do. I can't speak on behalf of the community. I can speak on behalf of the people I've talked to, but you asked three very specific questions in reference to what our hotels can handle, what our food can handle, and what the hospital can handle. In my communication with the citizens of Alamogordo, we're ready, so bring it. Not to be coy about, you know, the answer. I'm sure our hotels are following their procedures and making things as safe as they possibly can. As somebody who helps manage a restaurant here in town, bring it. We're following our procedures. We're making things as safe as we possibly can. I know, speaking to other restaurant owners that were very upset at being opened up much later than other businesses, they're ready, bring it. Of course, I would never presume I could speak on behalf of the hospital, but my wife just started her first night as a nurse tonight, doing the swing shift, the late-night shift. So I know, hearing from her, the preparation and the things that the hospital is doing to keep the hospital safe and ready for whatever comes their way, but it all boils down to what I assume you would be doing as the person in charge of the park. We have all confidence in your ability to keep people safe at the park while they visit either internationally, from other states, or even locally, that they would be able to enjoy the park and then come to Alamogordo as a Gateway Community and enjoy our community. So bring them.
Thank you for that, Commissioner, and I will certainly take that into consideration. I think one of the, you know, one of my main, main concerns is we, we don't know where the folks are coming from. And then when we reopen our local communities, we know that our community members are, are visiting in our establishments, which is fantastic, and that's, you know, that's exciting. I think the out-of-town guests, the out-of-town visitors are bringing a wild card. So we're gonna do our best to keep, to keep my staff, partners, and our volunteers at the park safe, and, you know, give, give our visitors every opportunity to also practice safe behavior. We're still, we're still going to follow the, the gating criteria and the CDC guidance, so we are working underneath that, and, and frankly, we're actually not even ready yet. I've determined that we don't have everything set up quite yet, but I really do appreciate that feedback. It's, it's helpful for me to hear that. And I did hear from Becky from Gerald Champion Memorial Hospital today, the, the chamber meeting.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Summerlin?
Yes, I just wanted to add a little bit to what Marie was saying, and I can give a few statistics and things like that. As far as visitation goes, our monthly visitation during the summer months usually ranges between about 60,000 to 80,000 visitors a month. So quite a few people do come in, and I would say a majority of our visitors are coming at least from out of state. And in regards to your question about international visitors, I would estimate that depending on the time of the year, those percentages could range from anywhere from as low as 5% to up to 40% of our visitation. I know in the wintertime, we get a whole lot of international visitors, and it seems like just about every other car is, is an international visitor. It does start to dwindle down a little bit in the warmer months, but with everything going on and people itching to get out, it's gonna be up in the air this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to add, Aaron, thank you for that, and I want to say, and I mentioned this to Mayor Boss, and I had a really nice conversation several weeks ago to, to prepare for this, this conversation with you all. I just want to let you know, I have absolutely lost sleep on this. It has definitely, it's, it's been weighing on my mind and on my heart a lot. So I'm taking this extremely seriously, and I don't, and I want to make sure that I am doing the right thing. So thank you for your support in this. And that's the end of my presentation.
There's no other questions. Marie, thank you, and Mr. Summerlin, thank you very much for the presentations. Very informational, and we will definitely work together on this, and I think we can handle it. I know we can.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public comment. Rachel, did we have any public comment writ, that, write in?
No, sir, we didn't.
Okay. Move on to our City Managers' report. We have with us tonight Stephanie Hernandez, our Assistant City Manager. Stephanie?
Evening, everybody. I just have two quick things to go over. The first one, probably Commissioner McDonald will better answer any questions you have, but we recently went over some of the numbers for the census, and New Mexico, fortunately, is 49th in the US of responding, they have a response rate of 48%. A better news is Alamogordo is better than that, we're at 59. So the county, their rate is a little bit lower, but in Alamogordo, our response rate is at 59%. So Alamogordo's responding pretty well. I know that they're still working on it, Commissioner McDonald will probably fill you in, and more of the details on that. The second item I have is we, we've been working with the Space Hall of Fame and our community partners. The 4th of July fireworks display will happen this year. However, unfortunately, the state does not allow them, is not going to allow them to have the tailgating or the parking, so that we won't be able, those passes that they sent out won't be valid this year. Also, the city puts on the parade. We're kind of playing a waiting game to see if the governor is gonna allow gatherings. So rather than just wait and try and rally together, we're looking at what the rest of the state is doing, and we're looking at a more creative way of doing kind of like a reverse parade, where we set up the-
A display.
Yeah, the booth or the floats, I'm sorry. Where we set up the floats, and they're gonna be parked hopefully at the fairgrounds. We've worked with the fairgrounds, and it's gonna be just like a drive-through. And so we're just trying to get creative, figure out how we're doing that. We've had a lot of great response from people who are willing to do the floats, and a lot of people just, I think they are just ready for something to happen. So we're still working on some of the details and the logistics. Hopefully, we'll be able to get more on this soon. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Stephanie. Move on to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission. Any Commissioners have any comments? Mayor Pro Tem Sykes?
I just have one comment. It's that time of year again, and I think that with people being home, they've had a lot of time to do yard work. So the "Keep Alamogordo Beautiful", I don't know if you see the signs behind me over here, but I still have signs for every district. And if you, if, if you Commissioners have any recommendations, any nominees, I'd be more than happy to take a sign to their yard. So just think about it, and if you see a pretty yard, just give me a call or text me, and I'll, I'll drive over and put a sign in their yard with their permission, of course. So I just wanted to remind everybody that yards are looking good.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Wright? We can't-
Muted.
Can't, Commissioner, we can't hear you. Can't hear you. Did we lose him completely? Oh, there he is. Mr. Wright, we can't hear you. Can you hear, can you hear me? Knock your head if you can hear me. We can't hear you.
This makes, this makes it difficult.
Commissioner, I have a comment.
Commissioner, or Commissioner Baldwin, that's the one. Well, sorry, Commissioner Wright. Thanks for participating. I have a list of questions, and for the Assistant City Manager Hernandez, you might want to take notes. I don't generally make a whole lot of comments. Yeah, sorry. I don't generally make a whole lot of comments during Commissioner comments. However, we find ourselves in a very difficult time, and we haven't been able to see each other. We can't visit like we normally would, and I don't get down to the city offices as much as I normally would. So I actually have a whole list of things. One, I was reading through our emergency order, and our emergency order says it will extend 48 hours past the state's emergency order. And not really knowing what the governor is gonna do, I was just kind of wondering how that affected our ability to receive federal or state funding if we came out of the emergency order earlier. Not that I don't think what we're still going through is serious, but as we move forward and get a better handle on what's going on, being under emergency order as long as the state does gives me a little pause. Again, this is just my personal opinion. So in reference to the emergency order, I just kind of wanted to get a little bit more definition to something that's very near and dear to my heart. Since 2012, when I was elected, the comprehensive plan was a real important part of what I thought the Commission did. And with a, how do I say this? A turnover in City Managers and, and staff over the last eight, nine years. Our comp plan, we've only actually addressed it about three times. Last time we addressed it was back in 2017, and I want to say it was adopted in the beginning of March 2018, and in the comp plan, we discuss actually readdressing it or discussing it as a commission annually. So with everything going on, I understand these are weird times, and the staff's being asked to do a lot of very weird things at the, at the moment. But I think our comprehensive plan is something that we can't let slide past us. We got to address it. I think with everything going on in the country right now, with everything going on in our state and our community, all the way down, sitting with this very active and engaged commission, which I'm very proud to be a part of, we need to address this pretty quick. It's been two, two years, two and a half years since we've really done anything on the comp plan, and this is the direction outside of our mission statement and our vision for the city of Alamogordo. The comp plan is what drives us there. So I think we need to get back to it as soon as possible. Thirdly, I want to speak about the city's plan to bring staff back to work. I've received numerous phone calls from people in reference to weeds, road projects, ability to get things done in reference to the water department. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Brian, and it's been probably two weeks since I've sat down with Brian, excuse me, our city manager, and discuss what's going on with staff. But I think the community is in a position where we're, we're ready to move forward. You know, we're we're willing to take the minimal risk that we can. Everybody's doing what they can to mitigate the possibility of spreading this horrible virus. But the city needs to be in a position where we can help our citizens and move forward. Specifically, I wanted to bring up a situation. As a commissioner, for the last eight, nine years, I've always been in kind of a hard place because I've worked at the golf course, and you know, the golf course is always, you know, it's a, it's a recreational facility, but I've done my best to kind of keep my mouth shut when it comes to subjects of the golf course and you know, let cooler heads deal with the situation. But right now, at the golf course, we're dealing with a facility now that's been open for six, seven weeks at a hundred percent. We're getting regular play, hundred and twenty to two hundred players a day. And our city staff is at fifty percent. And the potential damage to the golf course as we move forward, if we're not dealing with this come, come into heat times of the month, we don't have our six or seven employees, the potential damage to the golf course is far extends just a couple of months after the employees come back. I mean, we're looking at maybe six months to a year to recoup from some of the damage that's being done because we're not operating at full staff. Again, I I do understand that this is a tough, touchy subject for me to be talking about, but I see it in all departments within the city. That we just, we need to be there for our citizens. We need to be there, ready to react. We need to be there for the streets. I've got three or four streets in just my district that have had water main breaks. They still have street clothes signs up. They've been up for two months. The 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 time for being cautious, I believe, is not over, but we need to be there. We need to get things back open up. I did a survey, just in reference to the golf courses, I did a survey of fourteen golf courses in the state of New Mexico, and all of them have been operating at a hundred percent of their maintenance staff since the closure. It was interpreted that they were essential employees and that you can't let a golf course go. So I do kind of have an issue with the fact that, you know, the golf course is not operating that way, and it's it's kind of frustrating. So I I think everybody understands the precarious position I'm in there, but just to use that as a reference. So moving forward, my comment is I would certainly like to see the city manager's plan for how we're going to bring back staff, when we're going to bring back staff, and what order we're going to go in, in reference to what's best for our community and our citizens. So thank you for indulging me on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just if I may, I was able to send a quick text to Commissioner Wright, who told me what he wanted to say. So I just, for the purposes of the record, just wanted to echo what Commissioner Baldwin was speaking about, about bringing staff back, especially to services, parks, and the the golf course, et cetera. So Commissioner Wright was just echoing what Commissioner Baldwin said.
And if if I might add just one last thing there, I did use the golf courses as an example because that's what I'm most familiar with. That's, that's kind of why I did it, but I would encourage you, as commissioners, go take a look at our parks. During this shutdown, one of the the most amazing things that I saw was families coming together, getting out, exercising, doing things within the community, using our facilities and our parks. And the fact that we were not maintaining them to the best of our ability was kind of frustrating. And now that the heat's here, if you go take a look at our parks, and I'm not, please don't assume I'm calling out the very intense and hard work that Eric Marion's done to our parks. But he's hamstrung, you know, he can only do so much as as well as other departments. People are getting out and about, trying to get out and about in our green spaces in Alamo Gordo, and they're just deteriorating to a point where it's going to be hard to recover them. And then we, as a commissioner, are going to have to at some point decide how much money we want to spend to get them back up running.
You know, I think it's been very, it's really been tough on staff. We took a severe cut in revenue in the general fund, and the general fund is what is paying for a lot of this stuff. And I mean, I know a lot of this maintenance has to go on, but there's, there's other things that are probably more important than that. And I think that's probably what, kind of how you determine where to go with certain things. But I agree with everything you said, Mr. Baldwin, except I do understand why the staff have selected to do as they've done. And maybe now we're at the, to a point now where we will be seeing some revenue when things start opening back up, and we'll be able to do these things. Mayor Pro Tim Sykes?
I just wanted to add, I've, the only calls that I received are from people who visit the cemetery on a regular basis. And they understand the, you know, the the budget, they understand the fifty percent employees, but they really were heartbroken to see how the cemetery seems to have fallen by the wayside. So if we can add that to the list of places that we'd like to have look a little better when things open up a little more.
Just one additional comment to that. I'm sorry, Commissioner Payne, this will be my last one. But Assistant City Manager Hernandez, currently, we're operating as best we can under safe protocols at fifty percent. But everybody's still getting paid, paid, am I correct? So if you have a department that still has the need, it's not like we're saving any money on budget. I just want to make that point. If we have a department that needs the services of Alamo Gordo, that department should be operating at a hundred percent. For example, is the accounting department operating a hundred percent?
Are you asking if the coming?
Yeah, because I don't know.
Okay, so before I answer all your questions, I don't know if Commissioner Payne wanted to weigh in on this, so I can just kind of get all of it all.
No, 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 I have different comments. No, the red.
Okay, so let me address all the concerns. As far as the emergency order, because the state declared emergency order, we Patricia could probably answer that better, but as far as funding, it's always better that we have the emergency order. We sent that already up to FEMA. And I believe to the state, Jim sent it to the states, so it does affect our funding. And the more counties, the more cities that have the emergency order, it gives New Mexico a better chance at getting more of the federal. So that's where we're at. We do, I send reports semi-weekly to the state. We haven't seen any money, but right now they're just asking for estimates. It's going to be a process. I don't know if she has anything to add on that one.
Don't I always?
City manager, Andrea?
Not city manager, city attorney.
City attorney, I'm sorry.
Don't hex me like that. Commissioner Baldwin, so there are some ongoing costs to this pandemic. We just spent about fifteen hundred dollars on our Amazon business account to get, well, to comply with our emergency manager Chief Leclerc's recommendations, but also to purchase thermometers, PPE, like masks, gloves. We, and some shields, we have all sorts of things going on. So those, all of those expenditures will, can be or are eligible for reimbursement by FEMA if we have a declared emergency order. So there's also a lot of times that my son, Leclerc, Chief Denton, the manager Hernandez, Anthony manager Caesar are putting into making sure that our employees are protected, which I think is our, you know, an ongoing concern, as well as what we can do to better protect citizens and comply with the governor's orders. So all that time also is eligible for reimbursement. So as long as we have that declared, we can submit those. The county just had a discussion on this at their meeting last week, and the same sort of things were brought up that, you know, is it truly an emergency right now? Or, and and so they determined actually to keep their order for the same reasons, that there is going to be some federal funding on the table, and that if we are eligible for it with the shape our general fund is in, it would be, you know, silly, I guess I'm putting words in people's mouth, but silly not to go after it at this point.
Okay, and as far as the comprehensive plan, we'll definitely have staffs take a look at that. I do agree that that's an important document. When I first got here, I almost read that thing beginning to end, and I got a lot of good information from just overall what the city goals are and just the departments itself. So I definitely think that that's a well cause that we need to get back on to, so I can take that up with Brian, and we can work with staff. Now, the big one, the plan to bring staff back. This is a, I think it's a frustration for everybody. Chief Denton, Chief Leclerc, Patricia, Brian, and me. And I can promise you, nobody is more frustrated than us. We get just, there's many calls, you know, about every department. One that seems to get a lot of complaints is pool, it's getting hot, people want kids to burn off their energy. But you know, according to the guidelines, we just, it it's not practical to run a pool with the expenses and only allow two swimmers in there. So you worship, we look at the emergency health order, we look at all the documentation, opening up New Mexico, I have, go through the president's orders. We look at them regularly to see what we can open, what we can change, what has been declared essential. Recently, housing was declared essential, which kind of seems around that it took so long because housing is important. So the housing staff was able to come out at a hundred percent. The problem with a golf course is from the state, golf courses can open according to the opening of Mexico guidelines. The maintenance staff is not essential as far as government, because they're part of the government. And golf maintenance isn't essential as opposed to housing maintenance. They make a clear distinction. And trust me, Commissioner Baldwin, I, I would love to bring, it's ironic because the staff wants to come back. They don't want, they don't want to be home. They want to do their jobs. We want them to come home. We want them to come back. We, as a city government, have our hands tied a little more than the private businesses because our funding comes from the state. She controls us a little. We depend on the state and the federal government, so those guidelines are a little strict for us. But things are changing daily, and as soon as we can, we're going to bring them back. We get Chief Leclerc, I'm sure gets plenty of home complaints. We're all in the same boat. We want staff to come back, and we do look at it, and we have some plans coming away to share that with you when Brian gets back, definitely.
And I Commissioner, Commissioner Payne, I'm sorry. I I want to keep butting in just to make a response to that. Why is, why is every other golf course operating at a hundred percent then? So how are you interpreting it differently than every other municipality and county golf courts?
So it's not that we personally are interpreting it. We're, do talk with some people at the state. The golf course is private, the maintenance crew is government. So it it's a kind of a mixture. And so I have sent that question up a couple of times, and I'm waiting for another response for this bad question, and another one for another department. They're slow on responding sometimes, but this question, I don't, I've seen some of what they're interpreting, and we go through the health order. It doesn't, golfing is a quality of life issue. And so maintenance, it it gets tricky, and I don't want to say that it's not important because golfing, the zoo, the parks, it's all important to us. That's what our community sees. That's what they like to do, the pool, all of that. You know, we can't even provide the cottonwood at rec center. We can't do our junior zookeeper. All of that's equally important for all, we have, you know, from the young kids to the older adults. It's all important, and we want to give these services to them, it's just we need to be very careful on how we do it. I will look again at it tomorrow morning. I'll see if I can follow up again with the state. The problem is we can't take the interpretation of a privately because you guys can, as the golf course is privately. But the maintenance staff, we just, it's it's a difficult situation that we're in, and we go through it daily.
Well, we, we called municipal golf courses as well, and they're operating at a hundred percent. So enough said, and Assistant City Manager Hernandez, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you. Thank you for answering it. Thank you for answering all those questions. My intent really was to give you the questions, and then, you know, we can address them at a later date, but thank you.
Not at all. I mean, like I said, it's not just, it's not just you. It's, we're just as frustrated as you. We want the whole staff to come back. We want to operate at a hundred percent. We're tired of this new norm, as everybody says. We just, we want to go back to normal. We want to get our citizens what they want. That's why we're creating, right?
Well, let's be bold. Let's bring him back then.
I agree.
I mean, just if I can butt in, it certainly is within this commission's purview to, maybe we could bring a resolution next meeting. If you want to direct the city to open a hundred percent and take any thing that the governor wants to do to us, that's, you're the legislative body. So I mean, we can do that, but just understand that if there's a consequence, we have a very tight budget right now. So if something happens to the city, you know, we'd have to identify funding sources and decide if that.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to give that a lot more thought before we do anything.
My suggestion is that if there's
You're for sure.
Or a mayor who wants to discuss that, that's something that we may be able to put into an executive session because it would be threatened litigation. We could potentially litigate it against at that point.
I I do, I do want to point out, thank you, Patricia, I do want to point out that the reason I have never really brought up these subjects is because staff is really the city manager's job. And the last thing you ever want is city commissioners, you know, jumping in and dictating what a city manager should do with their employees. So I understand the difficult situation my comments could create. However, I have received enough phone calls just in general, aside from the golf course. I'm sure Commissioner Wright, because he's District Six, which is the golf course. I know pretty much everybody that's upset has been calling him, so he's received, you know, hundreds of phone calls from organizations and so on and so forth. So I realize that this is a employee issue, and we are policy and direction as a commission. But I just wanted it out there, my experience with it, what I'm dealing with from the people calling me, and the fact that in this very weird time, as long as we're being safe and doing what we need to do, I am at the point now to where I'm in favor of being more bold than reactionary. And then Commissioner Payne, I'm sorry, I kept butting in on your, your time.
Mr. Payne?
No, you're, you're fine. I I completely agree with what you said. I've certainly gotten the phone calls myself. Now I've lost my train of thought. It's okay. Just to add to that, and I, and this is so, in the grand scheme of things, a very small thing, but it is a thing that I get tons of phone calls on, and frankly, I'm just tired of hearing it. Street signs. I understand we can't put them up right now, but can we find out if they're in? Or if I'm being, if, you know what I mean, because I keep hearing they're on order, blah, 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 whatever. Could we make an out of that and find out? Because I, street signs are a huge issue. I don't know if anybody else gets the calls, but up in my district, you can't read them, and people are really, I I get a lot of phone calls. People are really complaining about it, or, or they'll tag me on Facebook or something dumb like that, which I don't like to do that because my personal Facebook is separate from, from my commissioner thing. So, so yeah, I mean, as long as we're talking about it, if you could ask about it. Yes, I'm sorry, what?
I know the answer to that question. They are ordered in a phased system because they couldn't take it all at once. So as soon as we get one order, we put the next order in and put the next order in. That's why you start seeing it happen all over the city. But we're still having orders out and getting them in. Our public work street crews are working at fifty percent right now unless there is a water break or an emergency like that, you hold it at a hundred percent. So they are working on the street signs, but they don't get them all at one time, so it's phased.
So are you saying they have been putting some up?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's what I haven't seen. So that's fine. If they are, then that's great. I'll be patient. As long as I know it's it's happening, then that's, that's great. The other thing I wanted to point out, just to The other thing I wanted to point out just to change the subject just a little bit. A couple of weeks ago, we had a fire and a little boy was killed. I'm sure everybody heard about that. In the following week, we had another fire. And I just wanted to kind of give a little kudos to our fire department and our police department. That's a tough thing to go through. I can't imagine what that was like to have to be on scene for that. We, you know, I run a nonprofit and we typically get the phone calls afterwards and we deal with them afterwards, but I can't imagine. And we did in these cases as well, but I can't imagine what it's like for our fire department and our law enforcement to have to deal with that. And so I kind of just wanted to give them a shout out and tell you that and I'll speak only for myself, but I'm sure we all agree this way, that we appreciate you guys and we're praying for you. And I know that that is a tough thing to have to deal with in the midst of all this. And I, I just thought it was interesting that we had back to back fires like that. They were in the same area. And so that's a tough thing to have to deal with and especially when there's a loss of life like that. So I just know that we are, that I am, I'm sure we all are praying for you guys and to be safe out there as well. So. And that's all I have. Thank you.
I think every commissioner would echo that. We thank, we thank our police department, fire department for the job they have.
Mayor, I got one quick comment too. I, I agree with Commissioner Baldwin and Commissioner Payne's statements on that. I've had numerous phone calls from citizens that have received letters from us as far as their weeds and that kind of stuff go, you know, and on their door, but then you drive down White Sands Boulevard and we've got weeds that are two feet high, medium. And I, I feel, you know, being in the construction trade, we were considered essential for this whole deal. Weeds and drainage, street maintenance, water, wastewater, all of those departments I would consider essential because you can't get by and live without water and wastewater. Out the roads. All those people should be working. We're paying them. They should be working. So I just wanted to put my comment out there. I agree with, with Commissioner Payne, Commissioner Wright, I think was echoing the same thing.
Did someone raise their hand? Any other comments from commissioners?
Mine is not, this is Commissioner McDonald. Mine is not regarding the issues at hand, but I wanted to also mention that for the 2020 census, there is a contest going and I wanted to put it out there to all the commissioners because it affects every area of the city. And if you have people in that area that can actually benefit from this test, we're just asking people to actually promote it and ask the people in your district to participate. One of the things that we're trying to do is look for a seventy-five percent participation within the city. And we are also reaching out to the commissioners, fire chief, police chief. If there's something that you would like to say in regards to, you know, anything that is going on in the city that you would like to see happen as far as funding is concerned. We would like to actually showcase that so we can show people that the money that is coming into the community would be of benefit. So if any of you all are willing and want to, please contact Amy. Not Amy, but Amber Mayhill, and she is with the Otero County. And we also have somebody with the city that is actually working with that committee also. One of the things that we do want to do is make sure that we get people to respond and that's one of the reasons why I joined even before I was even thinking about the election, but we want to make sure we put that out there. The other thing that we are looking at in District Five is to get some type of cleanup going and we would appreciate any suggestions that you have or that you would like to give us as far as, you know, just getting something started. Those are some of the things that we're looking at because it does affect White Sands Boulevard and I would like to see what we can do. Here, maybe everything is not going to happen, but maybe we can use some organized groups together so we can at least do something in that area. The two things that I have tonight that I am presenting and hopefully we can at least get something started probably in the month of July. So one is the census. We would like to get people to participate in there. And those are monetary gifts that are going to be going out to citizens of El Norto. They range from fifty dollars up to five hundred dollars. And that is done by tracks with the tracks in different areas. I, I don't have that before me right now, but that actually is almost at the hundred dollar level. So we would like to encourage the commissioners to talk it up in your district and hopefully get people to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Any other questions, comments? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Would any commissioner or staff like to remove, remove an item on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we can approve the consent agenda. On numbers one through eight.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes to approve the consent agenda as stated. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
I hear a second. I have a second from Commissioner Payne. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Roden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye. Raise your hand.
He's, he's an aye.
Susan Payne?
I heard him there.
Richard Boss?
Aye, motion passes seven zero.
Dusty, say something.
Yeah, say something. No. Say something.
Oh, I swore I heard him.
I did.
I did.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight. Consider an act upon appointment, reaffirmation of policy committee member and technical committee member to the Southeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization, but no asserto. Based on that?
Wasn't that on consent?
Isn't that on consent?
Well, that is, I'm sorry. I'm reading it from consent. Yes, it was on consent. Yes. And Stella, Stella is the one that's going to be on that committee, correct?
Correct.
Good. I apologize. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item nine, consider an act upon the placement of a new residential parking only sign for a home located at twenty-three Texas Avenue. Rachel, are you going to comment on that?
Yes, sir. So Mr. Charles Thompson is requesting, this is actually going to be his second sign on his property. And he chose not to attend the meeting. Said, you know, he doesn't know how to do the Zoom. He didn't want to call in, so he just told me to present it. It is within five hundred feet of Chin's. Actually, he's right across the street from Chin's. And he is also within the five hundred radius of the Holy Temple Church. So our ordinance doesn't state how many signs they can have. I didn't, were you guys able to look at the maps, the different map?
Likely to not. He's probably suffering from parking at various times of the.
Yes, and so he said the need for it is just because of the traffic and the congestion with the people coming to Chin's, you know, to drop off people. And so he said even a little more space would help him out is what he not only wrote on his form, but he, when I spoke to him, this is what he did tell me.
Is it any problem for the city or any residents of the city other than parking space for the general public?
And I do want to point out that his first sign actually came to commission October fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. And it was passed with the vote of seven to zero. And actually that was back then, the city clerk put it on the consent agenda and it passed. And so there was no, even no questions asked.
I move that we approve. Whether the discussion of this, I will make a motion that we act upon the placement of new residential parking only signs. They'll have created at two twenty-three Texas Avenue. I make the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second, Commissioner Baldwin.
A second from Commissioner Baldwin. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The seven zero. We'll move on to item ten. Consider an act upon first publication of ordinance sixteen seventeen and ordinance amending oh two fifteen through oh two there's fifteen dash oh eight oh of the Alamo Code of Ordinances. Patricia Bingo say is going to give us first on that, our city attorney will give us some information on that. Patricia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is an ordinance that was requested last meeting that repeals our gross receipts investment program or grip ordinance. Essentially, if you look at the wherethes, it just says that the commission recognizes that our, because of the current pandemic, the city's budget has been impacted in a negative way. We've already undergone layoffs, suspending freeze, a hiring freeze, and are currently projecting at least another twenty percent cut. And the commission must act to protect the city's budget by repealing this ordinance, but would like to continue this program when the city's budget has recovered. So this can always be brought back in the future, but based on the conversation at the last meeting, I brought this forward this evening.
Thank you. You know, this is a really tough one, but when we, and it's something that we most definitely are going to want to bring back for our economic development when we have the finances to do that. But I think now, my personal opinion is, is the, the jobs of staff and people that are more important and I, I, I think we, as soon as we can bring it back, we should do that and we should keep it on the, on the, not on the back burner, but on the front burner. But I think that we should approve this ordinance.
Comment on that. I, I think we ought to, you know, go ahead. I'm in favor of rescinding the ordinance, but we ought to put a timeline in there, maybe have staff put it back on the agenda in one year to, to look at bringing it back.
Look at it again.
Yeah, to look at it, see where we're at budget wise, but that way we don't forget about it because a lot of times we'll get busy. Things will happen. Different commissioners get voted out of office or resign or whatever it may be and all by the wayside, but this is an important ordinance, I feel, for us to have. So be direct staff that they bring it back in one year from today. See where we're at budget wise.
That would be an easy amendment, correct, Patricia?
We can't amend the repeal of an ordinance. So essentially what we have is a law on the books and we're just taking the law off the books right now is what's happened. So we.
I was just.
Yes, like I think Commissioner Reardon, I don't mean to speak for you, but I believe what he's trying to say is that he just wants us to put it on our calendars to present.
Yes, city manager, city attorney, whoever it may be, put it on their calendar that in one year that we bring this back to, to take a look at it again.
I agree with that for sure. Okay.
If I may say something?
Mayor Pro Tem Sykes.
Rather than attach it to a calendar year, why can't it be part of the budget process for next year? That when we're discussing the budget, we'll bring it up.
Work. It's pretty close to a year. It's what about nine months away? Yeah.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Do I hear?
I'll just make a motion that we approve first publication of ordinance sixteen seventeen.
I have a motion to approve item ten, the first publication of ordinance sixteen seventeen. Do I hear, from Mr. Reardon, do I hear a second?
Second.
Who was the second?
Commissioner McDonald.
Mr. McDonald. Mr. McDonald was the second on that. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Roden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
I heard him.
Richard Boss?
Aye, motion passes seven zero.
You didn't ask me.
Didn't ask.
I'm sorry, Susan Payne, I, I skipped over you.
You totally did. This is really hard to do because I'm pretty unforgettable, I would think. Aye, yes.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item eleven, appointments to boards and committees. And we have, I'm going to go over all of them just very briefly here. The Housing Authority Advisory Board, there's one two-year vacancy and one three-year vacancy. There were no applications received. Parks and Recreation Board, there's one two-year vacancy. This vacancy is due to the expiring term of Thomas Knox. The following individual is interested in being appointed. Laura Lee Armstrong, if appointed this her first term. I've reviewed her application and feel she's very qualified for this position. If there's no objection by the commission, I'm going to appoint Laura Lee to that position. She is so appointed. The Senior Volunteer Program Council, there is one vacancy, no applications received. White Sands Boulevard Beautification Committee, we have two vacancies and no applications have been received. And I expect everyone, if on the board or committee, go to the clerk's office and you, and you find out what is available and the applications are available and we encourage you to do that.
Mayor, may I say something? The White Sands, the White Sands Beautification Committee is, it's actually a committee that we passed an ordinance to create. And I thought according to the ordinance that each of the commissioners were to appoint somebody from their districts to serve on the committee. I'm, I'm not sure whether that language is still part of the ordinance or if we passed it as part of the ordinance, but the person who I, I appointed when we passed the ordinance is very enthusiastic about getting that committee revived. But he was under the impression too that it's a matter of having commissioners appoint people from their respective districts. I, can somebody check on that for me?
Yes.
Yes, we'll.
And should that be the case, then we could get people appointed to that committee from the local commissioners, yes.
Right, absolutely. Very good. Thank you. If there's no other.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I didn't want to say anything. I apologize for making this longer than it intended to be, but I wanted to thank Commissioner McDonald for her work on the census. I didn't, it'd been a while since I'd paid attention to what's going on and I didn't realize she was so involved in it. There's very few things we do as a community that's as important as this, this census for us. We all know what happened with the last census and how it kind of hurt us in the end. So thank you for your work on that and commissioners, you know, do what we can do to support her and get people to respond to that census. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald. Thank you, Jason, or Commissioner Baldwin for bringing that up. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? If not, there's, there's no further business for the good of the city. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Who was that?
Commissioner Reardon.
Oh, I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Sykes. All those in favor, aye?
I, I think it was from Commissioner McDonald. Yes.
It was.
Was it, I'm sorry. I, I have difficulty if I can't see, if I can't see you, I have difficulty recognizing. Thank you for correcting that. Mr. McDonald, we have a motion from Commissioner. We have a second from Commissioner McDonald, correct?
Correct.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.
Commissioner Baldwin, before you go away, please. Commissioner Baldwin, before you go away, please congratulate your wife and tell her to please stay safe.
I will. I'm, I'm excited that she finally has a job, but